Yep.
I got nine o'clock and go ahead and call me in order to start the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Next is. First of all, today's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second to any discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Here is next is approval minutes of one twenty-two twenty twenty-five.
Lance will make a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as presented.
I'll second.
Then move and second to any discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries next is approval claims for payment of one twenty-nine twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to any discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries next is consideration of approved fiscal sponsorship agreement for Iowa Rivers Edge Trail and Harden County. Then.
Sure, Iowa Rivers Edge Trail is going to apply for a grant for the trail. For the, for the Harden County Dam and Foundation, we need to have a sponsor, so we will be using the county and our pass through for the funds if we're, if we would be awarded, so.
And again, you're not asking for money.
No money, no, no match from you, thank you, unless you're giving it out today.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal sponsorship agreement for Iowa Rivers Edge Trail in Harden County.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to any discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries. Next is consideration to approve county attorney to execute disclaimer and consent and direct the county treasurer to cancel the tax sale and refund purchase money to the tax sale certificate holder. Earl, you want to talk on that?
Yeah, before you make a motion, there's, there's more words in that line that are needed at this point. Originally, that was, those words were chosen because there was another property, uh, rain, I was originally put in the packet, but this is a property called the girls' property in Iowa Falls, City of Iowa Falls is petitioning to take ownership of property that's, um, maybe some abandoned buildings or just something more of a nuisance and they're taking ownership of the property and by code, they can do that. Uh, we've been named as a party along with all the other interested, uh, parties. And, um, they have sent us a consent, otherwise they'd have to set it for a hearing and it'd be easier if we just sign the consent because they have the authority to take ownership of it anyway. The downside is, uh, they take free of any unpaid taxes and so that, that's just the downside of it, but hopefully the city will do something that will then
Get it back on the roll.
Get it back on the payroll and be more productive piece of property. It, it does not require, whatever motion you make does not require the treasurer to do anything because there was no, uh, there's not a tax purchaser on this property, so there is nothing for the treasurer to do. So the motion is just to approve the execution of that disclaimer and consent that.
On the girl, Gerrell's property.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I'd make a motion to execute the disclaimer consent on the Gerrell's property located in Iowa Falls.
I'll second it.
Spin, moving second to any discussion. Very none, roll call.
DJ.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Next, discuss possible action requests from nine-one-one service board. Let me speak, we want first one.
Me too, yeah.
Who wants to go first?
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Penzi Burton, I'm the director, our deputy director of Harden County Emergency Management. In December, um, Harden County experienced some issues with our radio system and that prompted a call to radio communications. And at that time, we came to a conclusion that our radio system is nearing fifteen years old and that it was at end of life and parts for it are no longer being made. So Harden, our radio communications brought to us a quote to upgrade our radio system to a VHS analog segment task paging system, which Thomas handed out a packet to everyone to look at. That quote is for three hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which includes a repeater for New Providence. Um, we reached out to MCM, which is our consulting company that we've been working with to make sure that the new Providence repeater was needed. As you can tell from, um, documents in our packet, they did studies with their engineer in support of the new Providence Tower and that new Providence Tower is needed in it and would increase the coverage, um, within the county. Uh, the nine-one-one joint service board has discussed and approved the system and is requesting that the county board of supervisors approve the funding to purchase this quote and the nine-one-one joint service board does not currently have the funds to support this project. Here today, we also have, uh, Scott Williams with Providence Fire and Scott Eisenträger, Iowa Falls Fire Chief, Mitch Paxton with Hubbard Fire Department, Sean Davis, Eldora Ackley EMS and Nick Castle Rock, Eldora Police Chief, and then Tom Bayes, the Union Mayor as well, to speak on behalf of the project. So if Scott Williams from New Providence.
Hi, Scott Williams, Fire Chief for New Providence, I'm here in support of the project because our paging system is sporadic at best, you can't make out addresses. Can't figure out where it's gonna be, what, what the situation is, sometimes it works, other times it doesn't, it's inaudible. It's been going on all the last three years probably at least. You can't make out when or where, so you're relying on I am responding, which is slow at best. When somebody's life is on the line, you need to be going out immediately, but if you're waiting on a text message that it depends on these cellular companies to send out, it's a good backup, but it's not immediate.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Uh, Scott Eisenträger, Fire Chief of, uh, City of Iowa Falls. Uh, kind of same going with Scott's, sometimes we'll get, uh, the first part of a tone, about three words out and then it's blank space, so now we're creating another problem trying to figure out where we're going. Then you got fifty guys calling dispatch and dispatch is busy, so it's, it's been a work in progress, it's been a a thing for many years, uh, you know, I've been on thirty-two years now and it's, stuff just gets, a whole stuff gets wore out and there's no replacement part to fix this stuff. I'm responding and I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, it's a phone app that, that we use is a backup. We've even went as far as our department of setting up a calling tree, going back to old, old school, um, because, you know, truly it's not about us, it's about the people we're called upon to serve, so I think this is a very needed item. Going forward, um, hopefully this thing will last fifteen years, twenty years, whatever the life expectancy is of it, but it is huge problems that need to be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
That seems to be nice.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, you can't copy anything, it has to be original.
So my name is Mitchell Paxton, representing Hubbard Fire and Hubbard Ambulance, um. Both chiefs of, uh, New Providence and Iowa Falls are correct on that. We've even, in Hubbard, it's, uh, very spotty for us. You can't get the address the most times and mo- majority of the time we're asking dispatch all the time on the way out the door of, hey, what's the address and what's the actual emergency? You know, um, I am responding is, has always been a secondary paging source, it's not a primary paging source and we, we've got countless times where the pager goes off and then even after the call, then guys are starting to get the I am responding, so that's delaying time, delaying care, it's not, it's not right, um. We need to make sure that this paging system's up to date and hopefully it lasts longer than what it is now, so. Yeah.
Good, original.
It needs to be fixed, so.
I agree. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Davis, uh, Director of Eldora EMS, um, I guess I'm piggybacking what they said. The pagers, like even here in town, I mean sheriff's office is just a block away. You'll get the tone, the pager will trip and a vast majority of the time I'd say now it, it doesn't say anything, so we're literally sitting there waiting for I am responding to give us the address and then even know what the emergency is, half the time, sounds like person down or something like that and it ends up being grandma needs a lift assist or, you know, you don't know, and like they said, the address is, you can't hear it, you don't understand it. Um, that is, you know, delaying care too needs it, so if it is a critical incident, you're sitting there waiting. Sometimes like a Verizon phone, they're a little faster, but if they have AT&T, T-Mobile, something like that, it can be like fifteen minutes before the I am responding app goes through all the loopholes it has to notify, um. So having a clear concise page is, I mean, key to where you understand where you're going and all that, I am responding is fantastic, but what was it, last week or I am responding was down? So we had no clue.
Had no, had no redundancy.
Had to read the dispatch and say, can you repeat the address?
Right.
So, um, having very good, clear pages is important. And I don't think without the system, we're not gonna, it's never gonna be obtained. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Morning, Nick.
Morning, uh, Nick Hasbro, Chief of Police Eldora, um, been here for nine years. Um, and I've noticed the paging system starting to wane about five years ago when I joined the Eldora Fire Department, um, pages are inaudible, inaudible, um, and it's rare that they are, um, so I'm in support of this project. Um, from a first responder standpoint in law enforcement, uh, we, we respond to all medical calls and fire calls, and if we don't know what we're going to, we don't know how to respond. Um, or who we need to let know, uh, to respond. Um, this also, the system, if I'm correct, uh, controls our tornado sirens and our warning sirens. Um, and this will bring New Providence on for that, which is, as we found out this year in Greenfield, is very important. Uh, if we don't have the ability to send out these clear and concise pages, we can't respond in an emergency fashion. So just wanted my support known for this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom.
Ditto. Tom Bayes on the mayor down at Union, and I'm probably the least knowledgeable about the system and how it works. But I had a sit down with our fire chief and our EMS director and they said it's marginal at best, he said sometimes it's two and three pages that they have to get into the third page, um. The I am responding app is a great backup, uh, according to them. Uh, and in my opinion, bringing, just bringing New Providence into the system, I think is a great asset. A week or two ago, the system was down, that created some issues for them, so, yeah, they're all for, uh, and looking forward to, uh, a new upgraded system, so. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm a pretty easy sell on this, from the first presentation, it's, it's the means that you'd like to pay for it. I do appreciate everybody coming in because it is nice to hear from everybody on this issue. But, uh, I remember when it was about a year ago, it was a seven point some million dollar project and now it's down to three hundred and thirteen thousand, so I mean, totally different.
But that's, it's, I don't think that's comparing apples to apples area, so this is, this is another patch, it, it's an upgrade, it's not the remedy, yeah.
Right, and, and what they have now, they don't even make parts for anymore, so when they're broke, you either find one in a box or you're done.
Right. Uh, but some of the, I mean, while there's some old equipment, updating the new Providence site will add the, add additional coverage and so, um, yeah, I, I just am curious on, uh, our options for funding to get this going, and then Thomas, what? If we approve this today and we get a check written by Friday, when can the work start and when would it be complete? If you want to give us a scope of work, so.
When the, uh, project starts, so it'll be a starting date, we have to let them know that we want the whole project in, it is twelve weeks because the F C C changed the rules on the way our sites are licensed. So New Providence has not had a license on their site because they were a repeater site, they were not a transmission site. So it's twelve weeks before they can even get that license and then the equipment is um, anywhere from two to four months out. So we need to get it started as soon as possible, the other portion is the discussion you just had about, um, last, last request was seven, seven million dollars. It's two totally different things, um, we still, even though we are working on trying to get over to the Essex project and over to the Essex radios, because it's a much better system than we have now. Um, we're doing that through grants and trying to figure out how to get that, but we are not changing the paging, the paging, even if we, even if we were able to go all Essex today, we still wouldn't change the paging, so the paging needs to be fixed no matter what. Um, we're not changing paging, the Essex is a communication between agencies and personnel and that still needs, but.
Yeah, I have one question, can the licensing and the procurement of the equipment be done concurrently?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like we have to wait twelve weeks and then, so it can all be?
No, they'll start ordering the parts, but they can't do anything until we have a license.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have a problem moving forwards, how do you want to move forward? Me particularly, I don't want to do a bond because I don't want to pay for it. Or the bond, I, I would rather just pay for it out of general supplemental if we could do that.
Correct.
If that requires a budget amendment or putting it into next year's budget, I think we still have time to do that, I'll have a check with Jolene on that, but I just don't, I, I don't want to spend the extra money for a bond.
Well, the interest compared to publishing for a budget amendment is going to be significantly cheaper. So, um, because, yeah, a bond, gotta get a hold of Dorsey and Whitney and attorney fees and publicate additional publications, so, um, I think, I'm with you Lance, that general supplemental, checking with, uh, Jolene to make, to get that in lockstep with her to make sure it can be done, whether it's through an amendment sooner than later, maybe.
Or, or if we can fit it in general supplemental also, we won't know that either, I mean, we can always fall back on the bond if we had to.
Yeah, that would probably be my plan. Z.
There, I mean, as far as, I mean, we can figure out a funding method. Um, and it may be a thing where we can amend the current year's budget, but part of it in there did. And then and we can figure out the funding method, I believe.
And I, and I do realize that nine-one-one gets money coming in and it's more, do I, do I understand it right, as cell phones?
That's free charge.
Cell phones, the the wireless, anything that's wired, you guys' iPads, cell phones, all of that goes into the state and then the state controls that money and there is a formula for how we get our money back from those funds and with the state having picked up um, more items on their side, so we're currently using shared services system that the state is paying the larger chunk on and we have, we're shared into that. Um, but our wire lines have gone way down and so we can send, continue to see a decrease in our revenues because we're relying on what's not spent at the state to be left over to, to send back to us. We get a certain, we get a three thousand dollars a month on, um, because our addressing and our M S A, uh, master index is correct, but the rest of it has to wait until the end of the year, state figures out what they've spent and then it is split up on a formula basis and we're a smaller county, so obviously we have a smaller cut of that volume.
So that, all that being said, the money they do get, I don't think, I think we can contribute to this part and the money they get can contribute to the small maintenance issues and stuff.
Right, well, and then there's, uh, they utilize for handheld radios and pagers and there's kind of a a schedule of how many pagers and there's a process that with some checks and balances that they use if somebody wants to apply for those nine-one-one fund.
And we stopped doing, we stopped doing the grants out to the departments for pagers when we started looking at the
Big system.
The big system and, uh, currently we're maintaining the system. Um, and what that quote is, there's going to be a small addition to that, that is antenna cable over at Radcliffe, frankly, um, because that, that, uh, coax is going bad and we certainly will take care of that out of the nine-one-one maintenance issues. But, um, I guess as a last statement, I, I'd ask if, if we can make this approval and then if we make it so the nine-one-one board goes ahead and purchases so that it's still under the nine-one-one service board and you guys haven't got a
We just do a bunch of transfer.
And then also at the end of this is an approval for me to contact RC Systems with a go ahead on that and saying, I'm fine.
I have one other question, are there any, uh, maintenance agreements, you know, Matt, tell, you know, Matt Jones tells us so many, every little trinket and whatnot has a maintenance agreement going forward. So is there anything attached on annual basis?
Has a two-year warranty on it.
Okay.
And then our annual maintenance, we don't know what that's gonna be because there's not. So all of these, um, I mean, it appears sort of telling me if you're getting accurate or not. All these sites and you have, uh, the second page of that document, if I'm not mistaken, it's the second page. So when you look at the places where those are all at, Iowa Falls, Radcliffe, um, Union, Ackley, those sites are all on top of the grain elevators, the old concrete grain elevators. So we have RC Systems come twice a year to clean those, uh, components and the cabinets out and, um, we just last year had, uh, last year, two years ago, we had them put ground, full grounding from the top to the ground around the elevator so that we, uh, stopped having to replace parts inside those cabinets. But with these on top of the grain elevators, it takes a lot of work to try and keep those, um, cleaned out and up to par, the other piece of this is that currently, um, our system is one where they have to manually go up and align the dish or, that's what I'm gonna call it, is the dish um, with the main tower. And that's part of the problem is that the alignment is always difficult, um, and you only do it twice a year. And this is gonna be a system that will, um, intelligently align, so every page that goes out, it's realigning. And each site is realigning so that it has the best paging quality and the best audio quality that we can get.
Thank you.
I wanted to go ahead and move on the project. But I'm not sure if we can approve the spending of it till we know which method we're gonna use.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with a motion directing Thomas to contact RC Systems to get something going? Or to sign?
Well, it's kind of an, the funding is kind of an internal thing.
Right, that's why I, I think the big thing is, is to get the ball
Yes.
rolling.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, instructing emergency management coordinator Creighton to contact RC Systems and to sign the contract. Uh, quote forty-five dash zero one zero seven zero zero one.
Right, I will second it.
Spin, moving second to any discussion. Very none, roll call.
DJ.
Aye.
My name?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye, Coach carries.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Um, so we need to by next week, figure out how we're gonna pay for this and have it on the agenda.
Yep.
And I, I know there's a bond, what, what do they call that? Bond, a public safety bond, which I, I recall does not require a public hearing or anything, we could just do that, so that, that I would use as our last resort.
Yeah.
If we can't finance it right away.
Agreed.
So. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in today.
Next is consideration to acknowledge Pioneer Cemetery vacancy and with possible action to fill.
Lance, last week, uh, one of the members of Pioneer Cemetery, uh, passed away. And so we have an opening, um, we had a couple applicants, um, the secretary of the Pioneer Cemetery Commission, uh, suggested, uh, to maintain the continuity uh, to appoint Mark Bokey to be, uh, fill that vacancy, so I'd make a motion to appoint Mark Bokey.
I will second it.
Then moving seconded, any discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries. Next is consideration to acknowledge the election of Wyatt Maxwell Auburn.
Yep.
To magistrate judicial nominating commissioner for Purdy County.
Lance, I would, uh, make a motion to acknowledge the election of Wyatt Maxwell Auburn to the magistrate judicial nominating commissioners of Harden County.
I'll second it.
Then moving seconded, any discussions?
I can tell you a little bit how that names, into the local members of the local bar association vote on who the two attorneys are on the magistrate commission. There was a vacancy, so there was a vote conducted by the Iowa judicial branch and that individual was selected by Harden County Bar Association to fill that vacancy. So you're just sort of ratifying what's already been done with the judicial.
Any other discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Coach carries. Change status.
I have a pair in the sheriff's office, so first would be the hiring of Elijah Nichols, correctional officer, uh, permanent part-time at a rate of twenty-one seventy-nine an hour effective, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Spin, moving seconded, any discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries.
Next I have the hiring full-time correctional officer at twenty-one seventy-nine. Um, Dave, I've got one question on here, I think the date, is this a backdated?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, so effective, uh, October first, twenty twenty-four, uh, full-time correctional officer.
I'll second it.
Spin, moving seconded, any discussion? Very none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Coach carries, other business. Howdy.
Nora, can you go first?
I'll tee it up for you. Leave on a high note.
Hey Scott, you can't leave yet. I, I was gonna call on you, do you have tickets for your event this Friday for sale?
Sure.
You wanna tell us about that?
Uh, Dooling P M's fundraiser, we're getting real close to our, uh, goal, five hundred thousand for our new station. It's February seventh, tickets are seventy-five dollars a piece.
Includes dinner.
With prime rib dinner and the show with Dooling P M.
Okay.
Get with me or any other member if you would like a ticket.
All right. You're welcome.
Where's this?
This, call it other business, just gonna inform you know, you folks and then the public, the Board of Health met last night and they did approve the twenty-eighty for the, uh, sanitary and environmental health position uh, to be filled through the county, so kind of back to where things were, um, before October of last year. They also, uh, elected new officers, um, Emily Novak is the chair of the Board of Health. Who was Aaron Budwig made the vice chair, okay, and Lori's the secretary. So I guess going forward, uh, anybody that has a subject tank or water testing or those kind of things, um, now they contact the engineers department here and there should be a smooth transition with any pending tasks or scheduled events, so we're, we're looking forward to a smooth handoff to, to Taylor, but I also just wanted to thank, publicly thank Amanda Winters, she didn't ask to be the chair. Um, she was asked to be the chair, she was not. Um, she was asked to be the chair. He was not. Uh, she didn't ask to be the temporary sanitarian. She was asked to be that. And so she came into it at a difficult time in a transition period and so, um. That, you know, I just want to acknowledge that, that, that we appreciate the fact that she did step up and. Take on those responsibilities and, um. I want to, uh, just wish her well and, and to continue to have a, a good relationship with. With her going forward. She's still on the board of health, but just wanted to at least publicly acknowledge her. Work on the, the board and as her sanitarian in the interim, so.
Excuse me, can I piggyback on more board of health information? Last night there were several, um, questions that came, came into mind and. Problem being, I, I was asked by the chair to ask for bylaws because I haven't seen a set of bylaws. I don't know who has the bylaws for the board, but I think we all need to visit those and read them and know. What are responsibilities are, so whomever has them, I. I'd appreciate it if the board of health could get copies of it.
Okay. Thank you Lori.
Yeah.
Other public comments?
Other business.
Other business.
Just to inform that the pre-governing project's going to start February tenth. Um, I've got a list of four of their guys that will be going around. And I'll get all the, the cars, the names, license plates to Dave, to Nick. And. Uh, they're going to start in Falls. And a press release has been given to Lain and then to Mike with the elevator. And I didn't bring back, so I wasn't going to.
Can you give an idea of what they're going to do when they stop?
When they stop, they will have ID, they'll have photo ID, their cars will be, you know, noted with Dave, Nick. I'll have to. I'll probably send a mail to. Josh, Nick and well, Dave. And they'll just go to the door, identify themselves. They'll do interior and exterior inspection of everything except exempt properties and. Um, they won't do anything with egg buildings, but they will be doing egg dwellings, so it's residential, commercial, industrial, egg buildings. And interior and exterior inspections for equitability. Um, people don't like value on their house, now's the time to. Turn why it's not worth what it is, because right now the market. Be honest, that would for everything we go again, the one we're coming by is a market price. Otherwise has maybe slowed. But people are still being, paying ridiculously stupid prices for drugs. Double and higher of what it's assessed at. So. That's what their job is, is to, to make it fair and equitable so that everybody's treated the same.
Is it statewide? As a revaluation?
We don't, this is Harden County.
And their cars will be marked and they'll have.
Um, again, they need their own personal vehicle, so they are not marked with Vanguard appraisal on them. But they will have photo ID similar to what we all have and then, um. If they want to question and call, um, a lower police department, sheriff's office or city of Isle Falls. Police department, they will have names, make of cars and license. So I would just encourage everybody to cooperate with them. They're, they'll be very pleasant and I hope people are pleasant back.
Are there certain hours in the day that they'll do this?
Um, well, it kind of depends. They will try, I think they told me a minimum of two times. To catch somebody. If they don't catch them in the daytime, they will stop at the evening, but I don't know what their. Hours are, but they wanted, you know, give everybody a chance to.
Be home.
So that, yes.
Yeah.
So what happens if somebody doesn't allow them?
Then they estimate. And then if, um, they don't like the estimation, the only way is going. I know the only way will be is if there's access in. I mean, otherwise you can't prove anything by saying, well, that I don't have a finished basement when. Maybe Scott Eisenberger knows that his neighbor does have a finished basement. And I mean, it's, it's, you'll be fair enough, we will for everybody. Last time this was done was almost thirty years ago. There's been a lot of changes in thirty. So, um. It was way before, I mean, it was two, three years before, maybe two years before I started in the assessor's office. And they used to want it done every seven to ten years, but the cost of that revaluation process has gotten higher. Um, everybody's salaries have gone up. Costs to do everything have gone up, that has gone up, so, um, the state doesn't. I mean, I don't want to say demand it, but they don't. It's just. When they can afford it and they budget it, I mean, I'll be in year six by the time that I, or I've done budgeting with the project. Then, um, going forward from there, then they'll just be, whoever fills my chair will be. Um. Budgeting a smaller amount every year going forward, so it's not as, we didn't feel it now.
Connie, would you repeat again what properties will be?
Commercial, residential, industrial and, uh, egg dwellings. The only things that will not, they won't do anything with are. Egg buildings. And egg land and exempt properties. That's the only reason I heard one is just to say, I mean, it's soon, it'll be starting in.
Okay, thank you. Any other risks? Public comments?
No.
German.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Thank you.